Our own person go out and check against what they gave up, the list of all the lot, to see if they were still correct. Because it could have been some changes since they sent us that sheet. I was told that the best person to send out for that would have been Mike, because let's be sure they're out there, they know what a lot, he cuts them clean. That was too many ago. We haven't gotten anything, so I didn't have time on my hand with an extension. I have something. Well, that's why we asked before the extension, but we needed a file.
I'd like to let the motion add, do you need to extend the number?
I would say.
Aye.
I may also prepare.
Well, next, next I'm going to get is to discuss with the board of the children associated with the body services to assist the planning, planning commission to develop and event and land structure, event and house structure. We have been having discussions about, which I do have a lot of, discussing about children associated with body services to assist the planning commission to develop a basic structure.
So we asking for the body proposal already?
Yes.
Asking for it, asking for it.
We have talked to the kid about it initially, but we have officially had it.
Right, but we have officially asked for it. Because you guys are quick to discuss it, because you guys said, well, if he does anything, you charge him. So we need him to, if you do this with us, how much are you going to charge us to do it? That's what we asked for. So this was really should get discussed.
It is.
So, so the commission is going to get with the kid and ask him to buy a home. We need the kid to, we're going to ask him for a proposal of what he's going to charge us and what it can help us with, complete this, yes, okay.
Is that going to be in the court, you would, you would plan on it?
Excuse me?
That's going to be in the court, like master plan.
Yes, that we already, yeah, that we already approved, excuse me, a last one.
Okay, now I think, uh, Mr. Sir.
You already discussed the one that I had. Remember about Florida, you're already addressed earlier.
Did want to discuss the time where you get that for me.
Well, that's what is convenient, you know, with the board members to, to meet with them. They want to meet with us.
Mr. I got it from a sound like they asking with the concept of individual, so they want to still stay on the board meeting?
They want to meet with the board members, who I don't know.
Oh, individually, is that what you said?
That's the way I took it.
That's the way I took it, too.
If that's, if that's a more convenient, um...
Okay.
That's more convenient, but my concern is that we as board members, that we need that, um, prayer. And it's a big real.
Is what you know, one, three, four, any other numbers?
So maybe I have. Item, uh, ten H, budget stabilization fund.
Yeah, this is something that I was, uh, looking through the, uh, NTA books today. And, uh, I know this is something that I had, I looked at long ago. And I just wanted to just bring it to the board, if they decide, because basically, uh, seeing with the recreation, uh, problem of that, um, to, to, for, but what it is, but what this budget stabilization fund is that, uh, we can, as a township board, we can authorize to create a budget stabilization fund to be set aside, you know, for money in case of future financial difficulties. You know, that's something that I wanted to, uh, look into some more further down the road, just bring this, uh, information back to the board, and it's something that we need to do the budget, maybe something that we need to add in there, you know, to put just in case we ever have emergency savings, uh, funds being banned out there, that money can be allocated, set aside, and that money can be used at the one dollar funds.
So you're saying, instead of set aside, uh, created, set aside, and where is the fund?
Like what's the message of that? The money can be added in there. You know, it can be used just for, it's going to be restricted money, it'll be more like, uh, like, uh, penalties run out of money, then you just take money out there and use it for, for.
Well, then they want to renew fund, right?
Right, but we just being separate funds, we're, but we're just using, we're just using as that. Okay, I want to get the information that I want to bring to everybody.
The board would have to constitute what, you know, what is an emergency fund, yes.
Um, okay, um, item number eleven, attorney, that would be good. That, okay, uh, twelve, thank you.
Um, I have a little something, um, I discussed about the board to put together a plan of action which will address cuts and, um, cash flow issues in the township. And, um, I'd just like to, you know, probably better for everybody, everybody coming in, me and Mr. Ford, Trevor, and, um, I mean, you weren't going to ask me when I bought it, uh, uh, super class, but there are also, and we're, um, starting to make it up.
I, I wasn't there last week.
Oh, yeah, um, yeah, right, so, um, it's just a matter of time, we have to say initially for me, you know, for what I wish to, but it will be, I would be calling everybody to hold back to the, the school, to get it together. So the winter starts and now, uh, so we, you know, so we, that would incorporate that to, uh, that fact.
Um, there's some comments, um, we have some comments from Chris and Colina. We're going to, uh, give ten minutes for this, so.
Yes, Miss Pat, Miss Pat, and Japan, and, and if you want, if, if.
I don't follow your mind, use the mic, if you need to make a difference.
I, I tried to get to my.
Can you move it closer to you?
Thank you. Well, last time I did, I did something before, so I, yeah.
Okay, but we need to be able to hear you all. So if you speak light, louder, or in the mic, you can hear you.
I did, um, at the last meeting state that, uh, sometime in, in the near future, two thousand and fourteen, we are going to try to update our, uh, mic system here.
But why not, you have already, it's been too many.
But I thought I was speaking as a pack, but oh, no. Well, that's because, uh, some citizens, like there's only one, you know, we're going to try to get at least one for each member.
Yes.
You know, you all start out speaking in the mic, and then it tapers off. That's what happened. You start out and it tapers off. If you could continue doing it, we could hear you.
That's what caused, that's the reason why she responded. People couldn't hear what was going on up there. And, uh, one of the sisters asked a question, and the treasurer responded to it. Really, because nobody knew what to vote for. And, and we should be up on with voting, it's about, thank you.
Those mic systems are around, actually, actually, they can't because it's, the cords are taped to the floor, so it won't go so far up.
You don't have a hand mic up there?
She has the hand mic.
We used to, I don't know if you've heard, this, they used to be one or two on the table, I have to find out.
I would just like to make a matter of record as well.
I can hear you, I can hear you.
And here now. I would like to make a matter of record. I understand that you guys, uh, have approved eight thousand dollars for the recreation board. I just want to let you know, per administration, and it's previously, uh, recorded from a previous board, that all programs must go wider before the board commissioners require approval. If it is not our program, they have to have a prior term, which is underwriter, to be in the building, while I can leave the offices. Also, eight thousand dollars, even if it was ten thousand dollars, to give towards, I am for towards the talks, I am for any program for our childrens. I do want to know that we do not pass any of this, this, this fund. Move the ten thousand dollars to maintain employment and doors being open until January. So some, if we're going to keep our doors open, move the ten thousand dollars, but that's probably what we would be able to do only, then employment layoffs will have to occur. Just want to make that a matter of record, and thank you very much.
I have a question, uh, Fire Commissioner Anderson. Um, I noticed, um, there were four people that came up, that were the lower city charities, they said they used their facility, a girl's track team, and there was a drug abuse program.
Yes, and I'm.
I don't recall seeing any revenue coming in from any of those sources.
And that's another thing. Moving forward, as I have asked for our board to implement, uh, because we are watching Ice Age, period. These costs, and for us to maintain and bring in revenue, we would either have to have a membership, as well as even being, uh, with the programs that we do allow come in, we would need to actually negotiate with that person to have a seven-third split of their income that they would generate, just like, first of all, I just want to say, I only know of Mr. Coach JD Harvey has done, and has, does have programs in the winter time. The other two, not familiar with, haven't seen a program yet, and I'm there. So, um, unaware of that, um, and I hear you speak, the young baby who gets to speak, actually, she said, her program wants to start a week out from today. So, once again, the director really needs to follow the regulations of the administration minutes that's already been implemented by the previous board. Once again, of coming before the board and getting any programs approved. And I don't believe we approve any of those programs. I know we have collective partnership last year with Coach JD Harvey, but the other two, I am unfamiliar of. And once again, it is a liability cost that the township will incur. If we cannot pay K O, which people are entitled to be paid if they work, that's a lawsuit. If someone gets hurt with these programs and they have not been approved through our board, that's a lawsuit. It needs to be addressed immediately on what recourse and what, what a would be would be and what, what a good resolution would be to this. Because, and what I'm seeing is that we can maintain with maybe the eight thousand dollars, but the park commissioners will step up completely and keep the rest open, but we will have to partnership together and come collectively to, um, do so with the seven of us. And that means everybody really giving up and coming in, okay, and coming up with a, a, a real plan of action to keep the doors open, because we do need towards the talks for our children in this area. They have survival things that we really do need, but at the same time, we can be logical with those things.
So the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant at the June that you got,
I haven't seen anybody.
Education center, that's just to provide services.
Once again, I don't even know that gentleman, I can't even elaborate on that program, don't have any information on it whatsoever.
Commissioner, I mean, kind of, or, uh, you want to know about that program?
I don't know, I didn't know, I'm speaking.
He, he, he said that he received a grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the recreation center, using statistics and the kids in the recreation center. This was services for the recreation, kids that live in the township.
Did he say what it was, the service was or anything?
He said that they're one or none.
I believe Mr. Eric was answering, I think.
Sure, yeah, I have a question for you. Uh, when people come in with, uh, programs such as that, what's the protocol? Is there a cost associated with it? I mean, and how do y'all, come on, what the cost is they judge for a program for, I mean, fee is there? Is, you know, do y'all have a protocol to where, when they do come in with programs such as that, how would they charge and what do they charge?
The thing about it is, with that program that you're speaking of, I can't even.
And I'm not talking about any programs, general.
Normally, what, like I said, we panic her, um, and I don't know, uh, I just know prior end of insurance now. Like I said, any programs that the board, that we actually implement, will be covered through our insurance. I, it seems like the past practices that I have experienced at, with this, there is no cost incurred, um, with these programs, they may be, uh, I do know with JD Harvey, um, really, he was charging maybe two seventy-five per, um, team. We did, we see that, and he has donated things to us. But the other two, and that's what I was a little bit shocked at, that with the gentleman saying he had a grant. Great, that he has a grant, but what are we getting from it? And that's the point moving forward, when we, because my board has not been very collective in negotiating and coming together collectively enough to bargain. And moving forward, you know, we charge for a membership to bring in some revenue, as well as we charge the people who wants to bring the programs. And we're not trying to grab a substantial amount of cost, it's likely to be a thirty, uh, seventy percent. That means that we will, uh, get thirty percent, and they will take the rest of the seventy percent. But they will need to start paying for the, the rental of the building, because some of these programs do not do that. We cannot afford to keep opening up the building, because there's cost incurred for electricity and gas. We need to cover the overhead costs for employment as well. And that's something that we need to look at moving forward, and we want to be a viable community, period. And it seems like, um, unfortunately, that has not happened. And that's why I'm asking right now, just to make them matter public record, because this is redundant to me. And this is an easy, simple, simplistic thing that can be really, really remedy, um, at this point. Like I said, layoffs will need to occur, even with your eight thousand dollars, it's just a bottom line.
So, what I'm understanding from that is that there's no, like, set standard, where, like, if you want to come and join our rent department, it's a membership fee, and if you want to bring your little league team or wherever to go, because, you know, I'm on a board of little league team with non-public also. And what I know with any of the other ones that I've dealt with also, that when we go somewhere, we have to pay rent for that facility, we have to join a membership, and everything else, do y'all have anything to do with that?
Unfortunately, um, it, it looks like there should be, there is, like I said, the previous board has definitely put in administrative minutes about certain things.
Previous board trustee, or the previous pocket record, pocket record for the board.
Um, and as I was trying to implement, we actually did implement a law, and it's, you know, not successful, that has happened, because since then, I haven't made a meeting since my board. Um, so, moving forward, the goal is to establish and maybe, uh, put in a minutes and approve a format to where we do have some collectively in the minutes. Now, I'm stating that we, because I'm even kind of going to pump it up to seventy-four, I mean, sixty-four, but we do need to actually charge paying, because that is how we stay afloat, and we won't have to hit this deficit every year. Because I understand this has been an ongoing problem, this is not the first time the recreation has closed due to the fact of lack of funds. And the fact is, is that we will need, moving forward, to, like I said, no matter, if this is an organization that's getting money non-public or not, we rent out a space, we need to either consider giving them a discounted rate, but we need to charge them.
Non-public has a budget, though, putting it before that to where they go, where they take money for all of that. I mean, what that would be like, you know, well, y'all need to be vibrant, y'all would have to come up with some of that, so anyway, just to make it go, every other recreation has everything required, but I'm thinking that buddy, this is sometimes what team, everything going up, but you know, it's just, I mean, I'm just wondering, is there a protocol with that?
Well, we really need to sit down as a total board collectively, um, and create some, um, laws, I guess, uh, then, um, on certain things, but certain things are in place. Because, uh, once again, it seems like our director seems to do things on his own floor, and there is no recourse, once again, and I'm stating that to this board, please. So, um, just now, that's why I'm here, because about mine, just even if it's eight thousand dollars, we will still need to lay off some costs.
Okay, uh, anybody else, you want to go to your chair?
Um, I just had a comment, I, I can speak out of my mind. I had a comment, I know you guys go along already about the checks or whatever, insufficient funds, that you got from a couple of people, fifty dollars, maybe, maybe you guys go along with that. I think that's a little high. First of all, we're not a bank or a township. Second of all, because people have made, maybe a couple of people have made messes, this is the most strong others. Everybody shouldn't be penalized for that. And for you to tell a resident they have to pay fifty, and we got so many other things going on, I think that's too much. And I don't, I think the way you look at it, you're going to get it, you're kind of, you're a little wrong. Um, everybody should not be empowered for somebody else to write that check.
Let me say this, uh, Mr. West, one individual, and I say, because, they did stop paying it. So, they paid us a check, they paid us, and if your property tax payment will be recorded on time, then they will stop giving you.
Okay, do you think there should be some type of policy set up first? Something that people can actually see, and this needs to happen, you know, and then that their process, yeah, I don't think everybody should be, like, penalized for something that somebody does. So maybe we should look at it as far as the policy, where maybe if you don't pay whatever, I think it should be something a little different. I, I just, that's just me.
I don't agree.
Maybe, maybe the board can come up with some type of, something that, yeah, maybe they should, maybe. I just think it should be some type of amendment that you guys can come up with that can act, that people should actually be able to see in the process of getting the check, so.
Like, I'm not, hey, what do you say, that you see what?
You know, like, say, maybe you can, um, amend some type of, uh, resolution when you're, when you're, that they can actually see on a document, what they get here, if you're, you're insufficient fund or whatever, your check box or whatever, you have to pay X amount. I think it should be something in writing.
We're going to say, when we send the taxpayers out, we'll be listed on it, if one of all the purposes, if you, if your check is returned, then this is what the fee will be. And we haven't had a lot of, but I think a ton of the people were playing the game, I need to pay my taxes, so I'm going to write the check on time, then I'm going to have to stop paying. Now, when they stop paying on that check, they taking that money from the township, but we going to pay the communities.
And I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying, it's like, if, I think if there's something written, like you said, on the document, because then, because I think that, that fifty dollars is my whole lot. Because every, I'm just saying, because everybody not bothers the check, that's why.
Right, it would only be for the person who bothers the check. And if you're putting on a wire, that if you, if your check is returned, because if it involves more than just us, then you know better. Okay, for example, we go, we collect the check, we do the whole car for open accounts. So this person wrote out their check, they stopped paying on their check. We going to pay the whole cars, the whole accounts, the whole account, now they taking the money out of township's bank account. So now, when you, we have to contact them, and we recharge two fifty thousand, we also have to try to get that money back from others. So there's a lot of work involved with people writing the check or stopping paying on a, on a taxpayer. That's not something that's supposed to do.
That's right, I'm just saying, law is probably written, it actually should be.
I waited a long time to get the rest of the board on this night. Uh, something was brought up earlier, uh, I might answer one. The colonel was an officer, she said about. So then why is she a fourth? She can't wait. If, if she's not doing the job, why is she?
It's just somebody's friend.
But anyway, my main concern about it is, I see her riding around, and things are not being addressed. Just like along the corner for me, the potential hazard. Got Liam's hand in the street, uh, scurrying here. And it's been like that for a while, and she's riding, I know it was Mary, but she comes from around the corner. Why is she holding? Who, uh, who's responsible for the tree? I'm talking about on, uh, Scotia, corner Scotia in North Carolina. And I have, uh, citizen asking me to speak for, for people at the front of Ryanville and April. They have, uh, you have to get over the wall, and it's walk down the side, and get, uh, shot or something. Are you in with that support? Why isn't it here?
Oh, this is my, this is my first person. I thought that shit didn't include you. No, I didn't put me in here, because I know two years ago, was that those same kids just spoke up with me, and I said, this love, hope to all of us, I'm glad, that's it, it's responsible, it's the challenge.
That's, that's what, this is, I think that company, indirectly, that's the direction that I was heading. If, if you got a forty-four year old, she's riding around, and I know she got the same thing everybody else is seeing, why don't somebody, these problems being addressed? Why is she in our report?
Um, all I can say with that, Mr. West, is that being able to report in the next month, I mean, four, five months, I would really be worried for our highest key, really be problematic for our.
What, what, I have a suggestion for some of the members, uh, of board, is to, you know, you know, if they walk around or ride around the township personally, and check everything out, you know. I, I would, my second thing is, what is, is our relationship eventual? I, I don't understand it. I, I was here when that guy came up, made a proposal, five thousand dollars was talking about, for those two lots. There's one being built on the street, and I had my street. And I went around and looked at it, and it's unbelievable. Who's approving the work? Right, has, has anybody went around and looked at the size of the basement of, of, uh, the houses being constructed? It's about the size of my garage. Um, it's, it's as big as my garage. I think, I think, uh, the board needs to, uh, take a good look at some of the homes that they built in the township, and I saw a letter, I don't know if it's gone, from, uh, from the development, housing development, about the, uh, full workmanship, quality of workmanship. You got one guy, one guy building a house by himself, you seen that? One guy, how, how many, one man built a house?
I don't know, but he, he had one guy.
How long does it take one man to do that?
I don't know, I mean, he backed away like that man, he had no, that's so, he's, I don't know, I have to kill for this. Twenty-five years, over twenty-five.
But does that make nobody?
I, I can't, it doesn't make right, but he knew, I had betrayed his book, and he knew that. But nobody bothered, nobody bothered with the.
Well, I'm, I'm saying something, I didn't mean nobody, I'm saying something, I, I, to me, to me personally, I think that it's time for us to stop coming to the township, uh, this, I, I don't even know how to explain it. I, I haven't seen any other community where one guy builds a home. Go over. Go over there.
I'm talking, I'm talking to the right family, Mr. Allen. I did not know Mr. Ford, he did not let me know, and he did it, Mr. Wright, that this was one person.
That is, they didn't get ready to go, it's been over two months now, and they haven't started to structure itself. During the street.
Because actuality, I had to, uh, call on it, Jeff, I thought it was more than a ban on.
One guy.
I had to call on him because of, uh, something that he didn't see.
And I have, I have one, one last question, and this is a question that I ask every board, is concerning the greatest burden. Why does that make the burden of, in my eyes, it's been squeezed, my only, uh, recreation, I, I can read, uh, what, or say anything about it. It just looked really great at my eyes. Uh, who's the judge?
I, yeah, that, uh, Mr. Dunn, that, and I might go down right now, so it's just me, so we got to watch, I'm talking. You know, uh, Mr. Orange, but Mr. Orange is not out there, Mr. Dunn, that, so, no, he's not out. Oh, you mean the bill, right now, yes.
But, but something you really need, that should be, somebody needs to look into, because that's actually what you have.
Uh, uh, every day, there should come these meetings, they complain about us, you know, the next day, I go, you don't think so, but you notice everybody, your countryside is up right now. Okay, board, uh, may I have a motion? No, excuse me, excuse me. Oh, excuse me, that's I was, uh, I was.
I had to wait. You have the first one before anybody in the board tells anything, you need to have an audit.
Let me get the mic.
That's what makes you money. Even with these powers, you need to check your auditors, to make sure that you cover everything that needs to be covered. That's why I ask, are you going by the mandatory plan? Because we have people coming here, we know what they're secured for, but then they wanna come in and change, that's when you go through the field, you know, longer than that, but you need to make up your mind on your auditors, how you want to do that number. Number two, I know, I wanna find out what happened yesterday up in land.
That's my question.
I'm tired of the video, and I'm tired of my phone, and now, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna get bankrupt, are we gonna be filed in chapter, chapter number nine, or are we gonna get considered a winner, or are we gonna have an emergency? The news ain't seeing no more about what the hell, and I live there, so that's why I'm asking, is, 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 can you talk about it?
I don't want to, but I will, but I will give, I will give Mr. Harvard and Mrs. Brink a chance before I do.
I'm like, you know, now, you know, I, I mean, everybody in this room, if no one needs to know, whatever, whatever I wanna know, I'll come to you, and I'll ask you. I'm not gonna be sitting in the background, what are you gonna do, what are you gonna do? I wanna know, but you can tell, tell.
Uh, what happened after me, the state decided to send it to the governor, which they said in turn, they were saying, uh, uh, they rejected the, uh, deficit elimination plan again, and they are going to send a review team down, which they said it could happen today, or it could happen months, months, but the first thing that they're gonna, gonna do, they then declare that we were in a financial emergency, and that they are gonna send it up to the governor, which the next step is, he is gonna send his review team down, which will come down and, I guess, go through all the books, and then they would take it back to the governor, if that's where we would get our fourth choice, well, well, he will have fourth choices to choose from, we don't get to choose from. He will either choose a consent form, he will either choose a registry manager, or he will choose bankruptcy, or what's the, what?
New evaluation.
Yeah, new evaluation, but that's, that's where we stand at now.
What's the fourth, what is that?
Uh, can we, can we let this break, uh, once we come? Okay, she would, now, can I, can I give, can I tell what I got from up there yesterday? Um, it wasn't what I thought it would be, I thought we would be in a room and we would sit at a table with them, uh, when we walked in. It was a setting similar to what we have now, there was a table, and there were three people there, one from Lawler, uh, that's favor of Ami nation, uh, uh, there was one from, uh, uh, the trade department, and another person from the budget. And, um, when we walked in, and we said, Senator, how you are, and, uh, there was everyone there from the state of Michigan, who we've been in contact with, or who from, uh, the Office of Fiscal Responsibility, and from anybody else in the state who had been contacted by the township, uh, all of them, they were there, uh, they also had someone from, uh, the, uh, Attorney General's office, uh, uh, I, uh, can I say this? The state of Michigan, we were supposed to, uh, take a letter up there saying that the three hundred thousand dollar loans paid off, they didn't ask for that, I did have it. And we were supposed to take a, uh, letter from the Michigan State Police saying that they will come in and give complete police service, uh, getting of every letter. Because that letter was not able to be received in two days through the chain of command, and it has to go through, it has to go through government to be approved. Any letter from the state has to go through the government office to be approved, then come back down to you. So, um, our state reps did get in touch with, uh, Oakley Park, um, station up there, and they got three representatives to come down on our impact. Now, um, to state that they will be patrolling for us full time, um, from what, I'm gonna tell you from what I saw sitting in the office. They addressed every, every issue that they had on the four-page document that they sent to us, and, um, we were able. We didn't know at the beginning, when they asked for citizens' comments, that was our time to stand up and speak, but we had no idea. You know, they, they're pretty much like a board meeting, they went through, they opened the citizens' comments, and then, uh, Kerry Bond spoke, addressed every issue on that four-page document, um, and, uh, then they went to make their vote, and thank you, Attorney Morgan, for standing up and stating that, wait a minute, hold on, the topic is here, don't you have to say so, and they said, well, that's what you were supposed to do during citizens' comments. We didn't know, so we were able to address every issue, as, uh, Kerry Bond was reading off, um, Mr. Cunningham was writing down answers, so he did get a chance to stand up before you addressed it, and I did notice that when Mr. Cunningham did address it, Mr. Bond should have said yes, okay? So, and all of this, the main thing that they seem to have a problem with is that we have state police patrolling full time. They, I mean, they, they, and, and they call that, uh, financial stress, but their problem is that, oh, you're using state police full time. But when we stood up, now, I, after I hit you around, that Mr. Kerry Morgan also addressed what happened up there. We stated that it's Michigan law, when, when you don't have police services, it's the law that state police can't come down and patrol full time. As Mr. Morgan stated, there are not, there are townships in Oakley County that have them, and he did not state what our issue would have been. There's four in McCall, who's never had four, who's never had police services, but I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Morgan, that we do, I'm gonna contact your office, that we do get this information, they have never had police service, state police has patrolled them since the beginning. If you are anyone who was at the last board meeting, did not Lieutenant Shaw state that? He did, so there's a, and then one of the men, I think it was the, uh, guy from Lawler, who said, well, uh, there's a difference between charter township and township, I don't know what the difference is, but there's a difference. Attorney Morgan stood up, and he said, the difference is annexation. Well, you know, that did make a difference, uh, with them, um, they, they pretty much had their minds made up, um. I, I, this is, I think this is probably the first time in my life I felt like I was part of a setup, because they did have their minds made up. Uh, they, they addressed the other issues that the township had, we addressed them, and we addressed them, and I'm gonna tell y'all something else. You talk about the deficit elimination plan, they didn't read, they ain't read, you can tell, because, uh, Mr. Cunningham had to point out something. You talk about this letter that I sent, they did not open that page and read it, because Kerry Bond shouldn't have known. Everything that he broke down and addressed to them when Kerry Bond should have said yes, it was in that letter. They had not, they did, they did, they did not read those documents, as far as I can see. So, um, I, I, I knew, I, I, I couldn't, after they announced, I couldn't even look at it, because I, I know that this board is appointed by the governor. We were told, and we were, uh, we had two days, uh, I would probably stay training with our state rep, Ellen Ditts. And I think she is a state rep, I think she had a little bit more faith in this board, uh, thinking that they would do the right thing. But those three were appointed by the governor, and, uh, sitting there, and sitting that, uh, sitting there and seeing that, I know that it was to do what it was to do to our township. No, she, no, excuse me, but her assistant Barbara was, and Barbara has been, Barbara's the one who got the state truth, and Barbara, Barbara works for her diligently.
She's speaking up?
Barbara, no, excuse me, the state rep, they could not speak up, they could not, but, you know, she was, you know, because I didn't, at one time, I wanted to, uh, Mr. Harvard to speak on the, uh, the police board that we sat, and Barbara, you know, got to go on and stand up and speak up, and, you know, I did. But no, she could not speak up on behalf of her, but she could be there, um, uh, the state police, I think that, I think that had Lieutenant Shaw or Lieutenant McQueen had been there, they would have probably been able to speak a little better on behalf of us. The state police sat back, they really didn't have anything to say, um, they asked one guy, he wasn't even a state true. I, I, did, was that the barhead guy who paid with him, and they asked him about, uh, patrolling for us, and he said, month to month, you know, I didn't understand that, because month to month is looking like on a payment basis, uh. So basically, how I got it, and I'm just going to, they seem to think that using, role of township, using the state police full time is, this is just my opinion, and maybe I'm seeing things a little wrong, it's almost like a welfare system to get out of deficit, you know? Uh, but what about all the other communities in Oakley County and McCall County? So, uh, I'm, I'm, I was mad, I, I was through, I was like, forget it, not doing it, but, you know, I had a little, got a second wind today. Uh, I hadn't become to the term yet, but, um, you have some proving to do, if you think that because we want to use our rights that are given to us by law, the state of Michigan, and you're gonna make us feel bad about it, and all these other communities up in McCall County and Oakley County do it as well, why should we be making you feel bad about it? And we've had our police service, there are communities up there that have never had police services, and you have your state police for over twenty-something years, and because we need them for one year, you're gonna try to make us feel bad, I'm sorry, I can't take that for that.
That's why I told you to work on that annexation.
Yes, I was out there, I wasn't even on the board at that time, but I was out there, I was out there picking it, I was out there walking, I was out there going to the police Oakley Park. I wasn't a board member, I wasn't a citizen, I was out there, Mr., I mean, Mrs. Ford, I was out there.
No, but I made you present it to them, you see, there's a lot, there's, there's a lot of things that you could have used under that annexation, first with the law. We were not able to vote when they wanted to annex from, from the township over to Oakley Park. Nobody down here in this area could vote, that was a law, so you're taking things away from me, that I've been going for. I'm a little, I'm a little, but that's why I said, the work.
You know, we're going, we're, we're going high end, let me put it like this, and, you know, I know, it seems like a lot of things, it's, it's up to the board, but I will talk to the terms, it's up to the board whether you wanna fight this or not, you know, uh, I, I think, I think our community is worth fighting. So it will go to the governor's, uh, office, he, he will pick our choice. He will pick our choice.
He might not be able to, he might be trying to do his own choice.
Uh, that's what I'm talking about, so God, God knows our birthday's out, we think we know what we're doing, but God is in control. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I don't get the digital, but, uh, you know, he, but right now, as we know, a sixty to ninety day, it'll, uh, but by then, we'll be in January, and I'm not trying to be funny, but we'll be receiving our taxes, what are they gonna come down here and do? You know, so, um, excuse me, I think Mr. Pat had his hand up, but let me, can I say this? Before, excuse me, I would like, before citizens ask this, I would like for Attorney Morgan to give his viewpoint of yesterday.
Well, I think you covered a lot of facts, the board is moving against the township, the matter goes to the governor. The future of the township lies in the hands of the governor, the governor will do whatever he'll do, we have no legal recourse. We must merely appeal to the governor's sense of justice, local self-government, for the best.
Uh, let's get out of the box, you know, we're supposed to be being white. All the black areas, all the black townships and cities, so, good, but, we got Colorado, we got, they're almost adding that. He was done, I mean, now, that, just when nothing's coming on, you got one of my, I mean, but then look around and see what other areas that you have competition with black people in Detroit.
Don't leave Pontiac out.
Right, Pontiac, they just got out of there. They just got out of there.
Pontiac, uh, okay, but they have, you see, Pontiac is a different way to get there, but see, Pontiac is not the dominant, that's it. So, let's look around that area down there, all the wheels and all that, I'm talking about the dominant, dominant black area. But yes, it's how, how many, we there, so look at the whole, let's get out of the box. See, there, there is, there is something going on, like you said, the city of Detroit paid us, you're gonna tell me, all of these people, every time I turn around, somebody coming in with two hundred fifty, eighty dollars, a thousand, thousands of dollars, doing this, that, and the other. My man, I go down there to see him taking my money, sometimes I get some here, too, buying up all of that city stuff down there. Now, if you're gonna go bankrupt, what, what, what about the money? Just like the three days, when they jumped up and said, when, uh, Obama got it off, they were gonna file a bankrupt, if you file a bankrupt, six plus times, you're gonna, I'm bankrupt, you wasn't bankrupt in the first place, see, it was a game, you play, see, they take that. All black people are stupid, we do have some people that have a little bit of mind, they know how to sit down and come out of the box and look around and see what's going on, instead of being a tone vision, like a young man in here when he drives a car down the street, tone vision, straight ahead. Don't turn to the right, don't turn to the left, but we, it, it's gonna be a change, it's gonna be an upset here pretty soon, because my man, he's lying, talking about personal, yeah, it's personal, but he didn't wanna come up about that money that Billy Snyder had, that they blamed Tommy for, that he had it for a short time, but not, it wasn't Tommy's bad, but not, it's gonna fit back on him. I mean, we just have to be truthful about it.
We had this discussion about the historic nature of this township. You know, your personnel policy has an introduction like no other, and it's, uh, we've ever represented, that talks about that history, and, uh, I think that the, you know, the policy point of view, that the township has to appeal to the governor, and point that history out. The, you know, the racial composition is an important element, the governor understands that, he does, it's political, but, um, you know, if it's a, just a partisan plea, I think it's a bad tactical question, but I think the township needs. But I think the township needs to go up, have a meeting, and explain what the charter township, uh, is, has been, and will be. And unless they can, unless they don't do well, not in one line, you know, the charter township. This board is well aware of the uphill battle it has to make, and certainly will be right.
Uh, excuse me, I know, if, if you hear Mr. Pat, you put one say Mr. Pat. And, um, then Mr. um, Mr. Pat, then Mr. Welch, and then we're gone. Oh, we are? Yeah, this gives, and then we're gone.
First of all, I just want to say that, um, when you have to go to court, that's a day by the judge's decision.
I'm, I'm sorry, you don't have to steal, you don't, you don't.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm saying like, when you're in the governor's territory, the man is in control.
Oh, yes.
When you go to court, the judge is in control.
Yes.
Okay? Think about it, is what you should never want to do, is you never want to get yourself in that position. Because you know, you know, you know what, because you know, you know they got parts. So try not to get yourself in those positions. One of the things that you could have told him, with Law who were up here, and that was that citizens of rural township pay taxes too, and that's why the state police are in control.
You know, I wanted, I, I, you know what? But like I said, sitting, I, I wanted to get up and say that. But sitting there and seeing that they had their minds made up, it was a setup. It, it, it was, it was. But yes, we, and not only pay the state police, but each and every one of y'all, state employees sitting here. I wanted to say it, I wanted to say it, but I figured it wouldn't help us if we had to do it, I mean, I was.
Yeah, but you see, they really hasn't come to that part of the county. Now, if they split us up, I'm gonna put this on your mind, Oak Park is not half of the county. Now, what you gonna do with the other side, well, now, earn their favors, because they half of the county. But what's gonna happen with the other side of the county?
That, what, what you mean, you don't, we don't do, we ain't, we don't do that. We have, absolutely. Right now, can I say this? Can I say this? And in my opinion, this board, and I'm listening to you all, and, 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 and I thank God that you're being optimistic and looking at the future. And I hope that we are here talking about a day like this, a day like that. But we, right now, just sit on sixty days. You know, I mean, I, I, I'm glad you're optimistic, but for me.
You got to say, you got to say that you're going to be here.
Yes, I, I, I mean, I understand that, you know, I'm gonna fight. I'm, it's not over for me, I will fight. And I said this, and I said it the first day I got in, and I said, I will fight to the end. That's just the type of person I am, and I will fight. But, you know, uh, I, I saw what I saw.
Well, you know what, I didn't say, no, I didn't.
And so I do say this, I would like for the citizens from this point on to stand behind us.
Well, you know what, now, this, this is how I feel about it. I'm all about standing behind the board, but just like I respected you turning my back on the board at the last board meeting, you got to do what you do. But it's up to the community to start doing. That rec stand over there, and I will say it again, that is the last piece of brick and mortar that we have the power of saying what goes on there. It's our last meeting place. This is not our meeting place, this belongs to Fernville, this ain't ours. If they decide we don't want, don't meet here no more, what you think we gonna do? You gonna be where?
We're gonna tell.
But that, but what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, well, you know what I'm saying? That all we got left is that rec stand, that's the issue. We'll be somewhere, we're not gonna be here. We're not gonna be here. And whatever Snyder decides to do is what Snyder decides to do. But at the end of the day, we as individuals and everybody sitting on that board, you guys were put in office because of what you said you were gonna do. And we believe, and, and, walking down the street, hey, half these people around here don't even know y'all. I hear them, I'm in the audience. They, they don't know what half you, who, who, who is that? You know, you guys are gonna have to put on another face. Because the, the, the gloom and doom faces that I've seen up there on that board since the time y'all sat down, fussing amongst yourselves, giving each other the mug, the mug face, you know what I'm talking about? Flaring at each other. It's, it's not right. And it, what you do out there in your car, in your houses, in your backyard, in your living room, in your basement, while you playing blackjack or spade, I really don't care. But when you representing me, can't talk to y'all, when you representing me, I expect y'all to be, have a certain decor of professionalism. If you don't know what that is, go look it up. And if you have to go, if each one of y'all got a, a, a computer, I was just out in the hall. Go to Fernville.org, Black Government, go to some of these other communities, sit at your house and start looking at TV, and check out how they run their board meetings. I've been looking, Oak Park Southfield, Burton, Birmingham, West Room Field, I'm looking at it.
And just like this.
They just like this. They having their, they ain't playing around. They, they are up at the community house, and they are up there having these little, uh, luncheon. And when them folks come up there, they're coming from all surrounding communities. All of them, they getting together and they talking strategy about what they gonna do. The only strategy y'all be talking about is, who did what, who gave you the power to do it? I didn't know about that. And if you weren't a part of it, you don't want, you sit up there and y'all. Y'all grown people, I don't need you sitting up here fussing at y'all like you a bunch of two-year-olds. I don't. And it was embarrassing. And I'm glad that my boy Kevin from Fernville, you look at the white boy with the computer. The man can type a million minutes a second. I didn't live until the meeting over there for Fernville, this man picks up verbatim what you say. I'm reading what I said. I don't even remember what I said. And this man is doing this here, and he puts it on the internet, emails you to everybody, and everybody who went there knows exactly what took place. And you think that man didn't sit here, type all that stuff up, and everybody in Fernville, and whoever else he wanted to know, didn't know what the heck transferred? I'm glad you wasn't here today. It was embarrassing the way y'all, I ain't even gonna call you out, you know who you is. It was embarrassing. There is no self-respect, and there darn sure ain't no respect for each one of you, but each other, each, and one other. You representing me, you representing, you representing everybody out here, and I tell you something else, y'all gonna get paid. Y'all gonna make sure that those of you who collect a paycheck, you gonna make sure that that payroll check get paid. Think about it, when you, when y'all signing them checks and y'all making sure y'all get paid, that y'all are not representing us very well. And Mr. Welch has a point, y'all complain for coming here and talking about the same thing every week. That's because it's there for him to complain about. If you start with just one little area, concentrate, get it right, and keep it moving, maybe y'all will get along. But y'all sit up here, and I ain't never seen, if, if you were, the money's is enough, you, that is, smack. I, other than recall, and tell, I'm telling you, it's out there. Other than a recall, that's the only way you can get put out. So don't be sitting up there thinking, you, you, hey, ain't nobody gonna get me out? Ain't no judge gonna get me out? Ain't nobody gonna tell me I gotta go? The same people put you in there can take you out. And if you want to sit there and let this township stay here, waiting for the emergency manager to step up in here and take over and make everything better, you gonna be in for a new awakening. You better go to Detroit, you better go to some of these other cities. Because the first thing they do is come in and they start shaking and opening the closet door, seeing where the bones are. And they be falling all out, I hope, every last one of y'all, closets clean, crusting, and they got nothing for him to find. Because he will find it, if that's what he's got to do to get you out. You will step on me. Thank you, Jesus. And long after this board is gone, the township still gonna be here, bless it. I ain't got nothing else to say.
Okay, um, I hope you guys, I hope, I hope.
It's really bad, I, I, what, what, one thing that I think, think with the way they went, uh, up in Land.